This conference will now be recorded.
Hey.
Kathy.
Hi.
Hi, Kath.
Hello.
Okay, we're recording now, Scott.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Tonight is the regular monthly meeting of the Commission. It's Tuesday, February 7th. The time is 7:01. Sherry, could you call role for tonight, please?
Robert LaFrance. He is absent. He is out of town on business. Edward Aborino.
Right.
Bertram Schmitz.
Here.
Michael Florio.
Here.
Tanya announced last month that she would not be here this evening. Ryan Tartizel.
Here.
Scott Harley.
Here.
Kimberly advised this afternoon she would not be here tonight. Lawrence Edwards.
Present.
Okay, can we see Larry for Tanya? And I'll point Eddie Acting Secretary for tonight.
Okay, that was it. That's Lawrence. Larry for Tanya. And who is Eddie's the Acting Secretary?
Yep.
Okay.
So first up, on the agenda, we have a visitor tonight, Diane Horner from Beaver and Wildlife Solutions. So welcome, Diane. I think you might have a small presentation for us to just.
I do.
That we have a better understanding on Beaver, Beaver Aquatics.
Okay. Yes, I do. But how do I get it on the screen? I practiced.
We need to make you a presenter. Sherry needs to make you a presenter.
Okay.
And now you're the new presenter.
Okay. And do I click share properly? And then.
Yep, we can see your screen.
My screen.
We can see. There you go. Can you make your screen a little bit bigger? Perfect.
Yeah, how is, how is that? Now, I think you can see all my notes. Let's see.
If we have.
I practiced this on Zoom. I didn't realize you have a different. Oh, well, you have to see my notes, so.
Click slideshow and start the slide.
Okay, my.
I don't see a ground.
Oh, slideshow? Yeah, that's a, that's a beaver.
Yes.
It's my favorite picture of a beaver. Okay, so, so my company is Beaver and Wildlife Solutions, and I work out of Chester, Connecticut. I'll give my contact information later. My background in wildlife started when I got my license as a wildlife rehabilitator. My, my kids were bringing me orphaned wildlife because they were little, they were close to the ground, and then the neighborhood kids, and then the town and all the surrounding towns. So I got my license in 2000. Then I realized how many animals were being killed because they were where often nesting and denning where, where people didn't want them to be. So I got my nuisance wildlife control license in 2013. And then in 2019, I got my first beaver nuisance call. And being in the water to help with that and to make an assessment, I just said, this is what, you know, I want to do. So I got training starting in 2018 and became certified in 2020. And so this will be my fourth season of installing Beaver Flow Systems. I'll go through, let's see, my slides really quickly because you said sure. There's only one species in North America and Canada. There's some in northern Mexico. The other species, only other species of beaver is in Europe, and it has a different Latin name. Has, beavers have so many amazing adaptations, but their very dense fur that keeps them warm in water was what led to their near extirpation in North America in the early 1800s, and then earlier than that in, in Europe. Their hearing and smell is their most, are their most developed senses. They have inner and outer lips, so they can, they can carry sticks in their mouth, and it's at the same time with their inner lips, they can close off the water from their esophagus. And they have two sets of eyelids. One is clear to swim underwater and protect their eyes, and the other is regular. So the important part about their biology for people is that they are vegetarians, and they don't eat fish or shellfish. They don't compete with their fishermen. In fact, it's actually beaver dams and the ponds that are actually good for increasing fish population because it slows down the water for baby fish to survive. They can't survive in rushing streams. Their teeth are orange, not because they didn't brush, but because they're self-sharpening very hard in the front, and that hardness is created by iron, which leads to the orange color. They're very active in the fall, and they're storing up food underwater for the winter. They're less active in the winter, but they don't hibernate. Important part in the next slide is that they don't, the population does not increase exponentially. So there'd be only one mating pair on a body of water and, you know, for, for a certain distance down each stream. They will fight any other adult that tries to come into the area. They have two to four kits per year. Some of them usually don't make it. And then when their kits are two years old, they have to move out. So the most you usually have are the two, the mother and the father. Then you'll have the first year babies, say, three or four. And then you'll have the newborn babies, say, three or four. So the most you have at any given time is, is 10. It's not like they will just multiply to 20 in the next year and then 100. And so they, they don't breed like typical rodents that we think of, like mice. They haven't, they are amazing engineers. They can build really high dams, up to 20 feet high and a mile long. And the Native Americans referred to them as little people because they modify their environment to meet their needs, just like we do. The reason they create dams, it's twofold. One is protection from predators. They're very clumsy and slow on land, but very fast and adept in the water. In fact, when I fall, I, if anybody's around, I say, well, it's because I'm part beaver. They want to be close to water so that they will sometimes build canals out into, you know, the woods and wetlands so they have a quick getaway. When the food is exhausted from the area, they move on, and that could be anywhere from 10 to 15 years. And then the pond becomes, becomes beaver meadow, which has a great advantages to wildlife. And then possibly when the resources grow back, they'll, they'll come in again. To overwinter, they need three feet of water because when the ice freezes on top, they can't get in and out of the water. So they put a catch down on the floor of the pond, and they can access that from their pond, from their lodge, in an opening underwater. The beaver dams create valuable wetlands. And we all know how valuable wetlands are. That's why we're here. Let's see. They, you know, act as a filter. They deposit solids and sediment. More beaver pond benefits. They, they bank the water and the biological riches for, for insects and fish and birds, mammals, and humans. And people find that with beaver ponds, they, the wildlife that they've never seen before comes in, especially waterfowl. Okay, now, there's a movement about using beavers to mitigate climate change. And beavers don't prevent the climate change, but they can mitigate some of the important effects of climate change. And that's they save and store water, which is at a premium out west. They decrease flooding damage for people because they, their dams are like speed bumps along the way. So the rushing water from a big rainstorm will, will be slowed down. They wet the land, and they've shown topography out west after huge wildlife fires. And the areas around the beaver dams and streams are, are still green, and they provide a refuge for, for animals there. And then there's biodiversity. They're actually using beavers out west to increase the population of salmon, which is drastically decreasing over the current years because of the great little baby fish ponds that they provide. And the theory is that beavers taught salmon to, to jump, not that they interfere with salmons at all, for those fishermen. But we also know about the, the problems that beavers can provide for humans. I won't go into tree damage, but there are effective means for mitigating tree damage. So on to flow devices. The most important thing I see for flow devices is that they're cost-effective and long-term. Long-term solutions, and I'll get more into that later. These are the four different types of flow devices we use. The first flexible pond leveler, a culvert fence, fence and pipe system, and diversion dam. So the first is, and probably the most used is a flexible pond leveler. This is with, mostly often used with jams. So the cage is built away from the pipe, which is, this is the inflow of the pipe. And so it keeps the beavers away from where they can sense the flow of the water, so they don't jam there. And then the, let's see. Oh, no, I don't want to leave the meeting. Okay. So then up to the left there, this pipe goes over the beaver dam. It's, we float it out on pontoons, and then when it's in correct position, we drop it. Now, the height of the pipe in the dam determines the level of the water, where, you know, where it will stay normally. We can't use this type, this cage without modification in water that's less than three feet deep when the water is at the desired level because any, any shallow, the beavers, there's less water, there's more water going, flow going through less water, and the beavers can sense the flow, and then they dam the whole cage. See, here's a diagram of the leveler. And we use, for the basket now, we use very heavy agricultural panels. The openings are four inch by four inch, and it's four gauge. Now, we used to use six gauge, six inch openings. And they lasted more than seven, they lasted on average seven to 10 years. And when, when the beaver system needs replaced is when the cage rusts out. So now we're using the four gauge. We expect it to last a lot longer, but we haven't been using it long enough to tell how long. Okay, the, the pipe is, yes. I think I were, oh, yeah, high-density polyethylene, HDP. And the size of it is determined by the water flow. The water flow is deter, in the size of the watershed, which would determine the water flow. So on a later slide, I'll talk about how I determine that. This was my most challenging installation that happened this year. One factor is accessibility. So this big cage, I don't know if you can see, in the middle of these three people, was built on a road, by the side of the road. And then we rolled it a quarter mile into the woods, up and down hills, and then we floated it on pontoons, a quarter mile down the river. So this gives you an idea of the extent of the pond leveler. Let's play here. Oh, no. Not playing. Oh. Anybody have any ideas? It was playing on my screen.
Let's do it.
Okay, stop. Yeah, it's not playing. But anyway, it goes all the way up and over, over the beaver dam. And then this is. Enough of the unfortunate. Oh, there it goes. Started.
Oh.
Wow. Anyway, we, we get the, oh, this shows the extent. Okay, so it extends, it extends all the way up to approximately where we want it in the dam. And then we rock the basket. Which is the highlight of the endeavor. And now this one didn't. Oh, we cut. Okay, but this is unusual, and then it's over our heads. And so we had two people on the pontoons in wet suits so that we could release it, get it in place and release it evenly. So it wouldn't flip over because that can be a problem in the deeper water. I'm so sorry. These are working. Let's see. So the next type of Beaver Flow System is called a keystone culvert fence. And it's interesting because beavers are considered the keystone species. So the idea is to say the culvert is four feet wide. The idea is to make the fence so long, the perimeter so large that they have too much to dam. And there is a floor on this also because beavers can dig under things. Basically, as they're, they jam at the culvert, and as they jam away from the culvert, they're getting further from the flow of water that they can hear. And it's, and it's, their jamming isn't being effective at all. And then, oops. This shows how the, ideally, the opening to the fence will widen, which gets the beavers even further away from the stimulus of the water that's leading them to jam. So they're very effective. This is an installation I did at a land trust in Connecticut. And if you'll see, sometimes they need, the fences need to be made custom. You see, this is a fairly shallow stream. The culvert isn't, is in yellow here. The water's flowing this way. So it wasn't room. It's maybe an eight-foot-wide stream. Wasn't room to do the keystone-shaped culvert. So I did 16 feet long and four feet across, and then 16 feet back, which provides the same amount of length that they would have to dam. So what was happening was the beavers were flooding this culvert. They were blocking the culvert, then the water was rising, and it was going over to the left. There's a dirt roadway with a hiking path, and that would be flooded out. Also with these, we, this is looking at the fence head-on. We make, usually make a little wildlife passage. That's so beavers and turtles and fish, well, not fish, but other animals that are swimming up cage don't get upstream, don't get caught in here. We've had beavers that actually got stuck in the mesh and drowned. And then, of course, turtles, anything larger than six-inch shell would not be able to go through. So they have a place where they can climb out and then continue upstream. Beavers don't usually use this to jam because they don't like being out of the water with all their materials. So we make this 18 inches for the bigger snapping turtles. But it can be reduced, and it can even be temporarily closed if that is a problem, which it usually isn't. The next is the fence and pipe. And here we have a culvert with probably much deeper water. Keystone fence has to be in relatively shallow water because the fence is 45 feet tall, and you have to have at least 18 to 24 inches above. So this will, is even more effective, and it works in deeper water. With the keystone fence without the pipe, you need to clear debris away from the fence, say, two or three times a year. Just not so much for, for jamming, but for the natural sticks and leaves that get stuck. And you don't want to give the beavers the idea that it can be jammed. So whereas with the pipe, it only has to be checked once a year. Here's, also isn't going to work in here. It's one of my installations, and these are just temporary supports. Holding the fence up. I put a railing support. This was after he stormed that one in September, like two and a half years ago, where people died, so much rain and such a short period of time. People died in New York City. Got fire in an apartment. It's just terrible. You see, the beavers, they can jam as high as they want, but it still doesn't restrict the water flowing through. Okay. In some cases, you, we need two or three pond leveler pipes. I determined the watershed on USGS Stream Stats Report. So you can find the exact location of the dam on their maps, and then it will tell you the watershed. So we used to use single HDP pipe, the corrugated pipe, and that can handle up to two miles of watershed. That became unavailable during the COVID time when imports were greatly restricted. And so now we use a double, double walls, which is smooth inside. The water can go through faster. And we think that it will today, one and a half times the amount of water that the corrugated insides used to. To, so then we have a double 15-inch at, for, for a mile watershed. Haven't done, had to do more than one pond leveler, but there are streams in Connecticut that would require it. Okay, the next type of Beaver Flow System is a diversion dam. And that's when you have a culvert, and the beavers hear the water going through, so they start jamming. You don't want them to jam, so you make a diversion with a fence and say stones or vegetation further out. Say the total fence might be, you know, 10 or 12 feet long. And so they'll hear the water going over that, and they'll jam up here, and they won't go into culvert. So here's an example of that, the fence built away from the culvert. And we do site assessments to see whether it's built because for certain flow systems, you need a certain depth of water. At most, Beaver conflict situations can be managed with flow devices. And another advantage to get a site assessment is that you can, in Connecticut, you can apply for a grant to help with the cost of the Beaver Flow System. And that is offered through the Connecticut Beaver Initiative Grant. Is that what it is? Part of my screen is CB. Yeah, Beaver Initiative. And the grant is mostly funded by the White Deerhold Foundation, that does a lot of funding for wildlife nature in the state. And they provide up to about a third of the cost of a Beaver Flow Installation. The application is really easy. It's on the Beaver Institute website, and there's a fast turnaround. It just takes a couple of days to find out what you've been granted. Okay, now, this was the average cost this fall of the different type of installations. Now, since I started in 2020, the cost has doubled and tripled on a lot of, of this applies due to COVID. If you notice, last option of trapping, which is often used, is definitely not cost-effective. The last time I checked, they charged about $200 a beaver to trap and kill. And so just one trapping would be the cost of some of the Beaver Flow Systems. And if you, and that can, can need to be repeated within a year, and sometimes yearly. So you can see that that cost would rapidly surpass the, the, the most expensive Beaver Flow System. So there's where your cost effectiveness is. For my Beaver Flow Systems, I offer a maintenance program. I just pay yearly. It, depending on the type of the flow system, will be checked periodically through the year. And in the first year, if there's a problem that renders the be, the beaver system, system unable to work, has a full money-back guarantee. And then for every year after the first year, you get two times, you know, of your yearly maintenance agreement. This doesn't include acts of nature like trees falling and smashing the pipes. The pipes went toward the cage, but it ensures any problem with the materials that I install.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. And so a special thank you to Mike Callahan. He was my mentor, he founded the Beaver Institute. He is training people all over the country and actually Canada and Europe to install these symptoms. And he's been at it for 23 years. So I feel really honored to have worked with him because I learned from all his mistakes, all the things he tried that didn't work. And now, you know, he's very proficient in spelling systems and he gave me access to the slides of the Beaver Institute, which is a nonprofit organization and it's based in Massachusetts. Beaver professionals that are all over the country. I'm the only one who resides in Connecticut right now. I do Connecticut and Rhode Island. Mike still does the, like, the top third, I'd say, of Connecticut because he's in the Southampton area and he's closer there. But the goal is to get beaver flow system installers all over the country. And as you can see, there's already some in Canada. And I don't know, at last, I'd be happy to take, there are any questions or go over anything that I might have run over too quickly.
Great, thanks Diane.
Okay.
So is there any questions from the commission for Diane?
That was quite a bit of information. I didn't know a lot of that stuff. I thought it.
Good, good. Yeah, the more I learn, the more fascinating it is.
Who are beavers predators? What predators do they have?
Oh, coyotes. Coyotes, I believe bobcats, of course, cougars, which we don't have around here. And the babies are so little that they can be preyed on by almost any animal. But for beavers, coyotes, coyotes and bobcats in this area.
Excuse me, Mr. Harley, Mr. Chairman, may I ask Diane a question? Diane, have you found any places that? You can't, you can't rectify the problems that are happening right now, like Route 81?
Oh, I haven't been asked to assess that. Let me think, Route 81.
If you go up, if you go up Route 81 towards Killiwake.
That being back at the high, would that be in back of the high school?
Past the high school, ma'am, you'll see.
Okay, yeah, no, I haven't assessed that area.
Water is going underneath the road. It's got a road, it's top to road.
It's supposed to go underneath the road or not? That's supposed to go underneath?
No.
I mean, it's down culvert there?
Yeah, it's just, it's it's been there, it's been there, it's a real nuisance and also along some certain roads. The homeowners are taking a beating.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'd be glad to do an assessment for any, any place.
Yeah, we'll give the, we'll give the addresses. I mean, we don't, we don't want to kill them, I mean, we don't want to can't relocate them, they keep coming back. They keep coming back. And it's affecting, it's actually, it estimated several neighborhoods, ink blintzing. The trees, everything is gone, it looks like a, an animal bobbed off. And the water, millions of gallons of water that are feeding beavers. And it's so out of control. It's hurting people, property, not the value, but it's hurting the septic systems, this the backyards. The water is coming up into their yard. It's going into the, into the septic. So when, when is enough enough?
Well.
They're really hurting.
Well, I did a job in Chester where the neighbor was worried about the septic system. And so we were able to lower the wire table by a foot. You can, you can lower it up to a foot a year, you know, if there's enough depth there. If we lower it any more than a foot, the beavers get get frustrated and then they'll leave and jam somewhere else, which, which might be great. But it also might be just like 20 feet downstream. And then you have, you know, the problem all over again. So we were able to lower it to protect some electrical lights and septic tanks. And it's been there, well, for four years and everything is running fine.
Well, if you go behind Spencer Court off of Glenwood Road and up to Liberty Street, you'll see from Liberty Street to Pearson is quite a long way, is correct? It's millions of gallons of water down there. And then if you go to Route 81, you'll see millions of gallons of water there also.
Eddie, okay, if I can interrupt for just a second, I really was interested in these systems, but I didn't have anybody to recommend before. So when I suggested the idea, I didn't have anybody who knew how to do it.
I'd like, possibly laying out a format like those triangular culverts. I think that is a big help in a couple of, but that would be something that would have. One of my questions.
Hey Diane, could you mute for a minute? We're getting a little feedback through your.
Mute.
There you go. Can you hear me now? Did you get any of that? Hello?
We hear you, George.
There we go. You know, the triangular culverts are, you know, they seem pretty interesting as far as they look like that's something that would work in this town, in this area, around all the different areas that they have to be stuck. And they could probably be done for a reasonable cost in the long run. But it would be, you know, like Ed said, it's just, it gets out of control, what are you gonna do? But try to get rid of the, get rid of them. But if that's something that would actually keep the flow of water going, then that's something to look at. But one of my questions is, do these culverts have to be approved by, well, I guess you're, I guess Ed would be the building guy, right? I guess it would be able to be approved through the town hall here anyways. You wouldn't have to have an architect's design for it, would you?
No, it's not a structure like that, it's piping in the cage. I think the problem was before, the area Eddie's referring to, I didn't have anybody I could recommend at that time. I was researching these systems. And then I went to a Cackeywick meeting for the Connecticut Association of Inland Wetlands Conservation Commissions. And I got some information from someone I was sitting with. They mentioned this and I was able to, you know, contact Diane. Diane did offer, which was very generous of her, if we wanted to see the system she's installed in Chester, she can get property permission and we could go take a look at it.
Anything, anything would be better than what we got now, Kathy, you know all the problems.
Well, I think you'd have to.
These poor people are going through.
They'd have to give Diane permission to go onto her prop, their property.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the homeowners now would love to have Diane come and look and see what they could do.
Yeah, they'd need to give her permission to do that. So she could go onto the private property and look. But she came out with me and Mike Florio and she's terrific, very thorough. And she mentioned, we were out there, that she hasn't encountered a situation yet that couldn't be solved with one of these systems.
So you took it to Liberty Street and all that, all the settlers religion?
No, we went to Lindera Lane.
That's what she should see. Well, she saw Florio's yard?
Yeah, but we, I couldn't take her around because we don't have private property permission to go into those properties.
But she saw Florio's, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what happened to these other people. And it's not fair that Mike lost most of his property. You know?
But the other thing too is like, the homeowner's gotta pay for, pay this big, who's paying the $1,900?
Well, there's grant money available, as Diane said, for the system and it's cheaper than trapping.
Well, trapping's free. You get, you get the state to trap for free.
Yeah, I've been trapping beavers once. I charged about $195 to the site because it takes a while and I have to get the water up. And I have often to put on wet suits to get in the water. And then I go on to list guests and I get all the statistics for that site. And then I write up a full estimate with the types of materials that will be used. So I'm willing to do that for for anyone. I also am willing to help town to themselves. There's actually directions on Beaver Institute, manage yourself. The ways that I can help each to help find the right materials. A lot of materials that are tried fail. And then we think that our beaver flow systems will work. And it was really just the wrong materials. But I'm glad to offer my time as a consultant or work along with a town or a homeowner if they wanted to reduce the cost.
How much money is it towards the homeowner, Diane?
That it's been, the grant has been paying a third, about a third of the cost. Yeah, every, every grant is split at, you know, with the site assessment. And I'm actually on committee that decides on it, but I can't, of course, be helping them. And that's gonna last at least seven years. Some of them that Mike has done are there 12 years later with no problems. And we're using heavier material now, both for the cage and for the pipes. So it should last a very long time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
And people can do their own maintenance if they want, you know, it's not very time-consuming at all. It just needs to be once a year or twice between the year, depending on the system.
Great. Any other questions from the commission? No. Okay, well, thank you Diane, it was a pleasure and we really appreciate you taking the time to talk to us and educating us of it. I assume Kathy, you have Diane's information so that we can, you know, start passing that out as people come in to start asking questions.
Yeah, she's, she's done a PDF of her presentation, so I'm gonna forward that to all of you as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Especially because there's members that couldn't come tonight, so they can see it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Diane.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer any questions and I hope something here was useful. Glad to meet you all.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to item number three. Yeah, there we go, okay. Now it's getting some feedback on her, on her end. So we need to have approval of the minutes from the January 3rd, 2023 monthly meeting. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, Bert.
Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, I heard Eddie first. Any discussions, the minutes from last month's meeting? Nope, okay, all those voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstain? Number four, chair's comments. I don't have any comments for this month. So we can go right to item number five, receipt of applications. So this is gonna be a new application, it's gonna be IWC 23-2, 17 Baxter Road, Thomas A. Stevens Associates is the applicant. Wilson and Scott Santiago are the owners. This is for a new application for activity within 50 feet of an inland wetlands or a water course for the removal of wood chips. Assessors map 14, block four, lot 70, in the zone R30. And this is a new application. I guess Kathy and Abby, we don't have a link to this application in our agenda?
So this application came in and I did an initial review. It needs some corrections, nothing huge, but it does need a few things. So I talked with the agent, who's Chuck Mandell, professional engineer. He represented Mr. Santiago in the last application. He said he is away until February 13th, but he is planning to send the corrections and get all of that done. But I think you could certainly still accept it, I mean, it's reasonable to accept. And then if you'd like to hold a site walk, I'm not sure, Sheri, why there's not a link to it? Was there a reason or?
Yeah, I checked the document center for 15 and 17 Baxter Road and it appeared to be the old application.
Yeah, I think we did several revisions to the agenda and I think somewhere along the line it got lost and I didn't realize it. My apologies, I put a note to add the link in for next month, although I'll do it tomorrow.
It's been changed so many times, Sheri, I understand that.
Yeah, it certainly has.
But Kathy did, they went along with our recommendation because of the fire dangers and the unstable wall and everything, is that so?
Yes, the fire danger and also the DEP violation of it being in illegal landfill. So they're submitting an application, they're no longer requesting an application to cover them with a Geo Mat. Now they're requesting an application for removal.
Okay, as you know, that came right from NFPA, so I mean.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Eddie, for that information.
So since we don't have the application to review, I guess, does everyone feel comfortable accepting it? At least at this meeting with Kathy's review and the couple of comments that she had?
They're mostly clerical things.
If it's just clerical, we talked about not taking applications up there for, but if Kathy's feeling comfortable with it.
Yeah, it's not like they're missing anything important, it's mostly just some clerical corrections they have to make. If Kathy gives a green light, I'm good with it.
Kathy gives a green if Kathy gives a green light, I'm good with it.
Okay.
This is Bert. Um, I got no problems uh, there. In fact, I think we've done one or two whips uh, sidewalks up in that area already, so uh.
Well, if you'd like another, we can.
I don't think another sidewalk is is really necessary.
Okay.
I think we discussed a lot of what we wanna do or what we wanted them to do.
As long as we get what we want, remove all those chips and everything.
Yeah, that's 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 the game. That's what the game is. So I don't need, we don't, I don't think we need a sidewalk. And I'll go along with what we have here.
So can I make a motion to accept the application, receipt of it?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Hey, I heard Bert and Larry. Let's do Larry. Larry hasn't seconded anything yet. Any discussions on application? Before voting to accept, any discussion? Um, just real quick for me, I guess, Larry, have you had an opportunity to see the site?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yes.
I think um, I think everyone has seen it.
Everybody has, because I went out a few times with different members.
Okay.
Is the rooster still there? Is the rooster still there?
No, not. I believe he's gone now. I've gone out a couple of times, actually multiple times.
Okay, so no sidewalk necessary. So Eddie made a motion to accept Larry's seconds. Without any other discussion, we can vote. So all those voting in favor of accepting this application, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstain? No, not since we're since we're not voting.
I'm taking the note just why I so just all 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 in favor.
Yep, no one opposed or abstained. So we accepted the application. So I guess at next month's meeting, Mr. Mandell is planning to, I assume, show us his site plan.
Yes, he is.
The middle. Okay.
He's gonna submit the corrections when he gets back and then he said he'll be definitely here for the March meeting.
Okay, and then have they paid a new fee since this is a new application?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, we're good on that. We'll talk next month about that and talk to Mr. Mandell. Um, and I did not see any other applications that need to be added to the agenda, right, Sherry?
No, there are no more at this time.
Okay, good. So moving along to item agenda number six, application reviews. There are no other ones. This is the only one for this year. Actually, just real quickly, why was this given the number twenty-three dash two? What was twenty-three dash one?
That is nineteen Lyndera and that is not on the agenda because it's incomplete. And I've had multiple uh, correspondences with the property owner and I actually called today and I got his voicemail. I offered to meet with him because I think he might be confused about some of what he needs to submit, so it might be easier to just sit down and go over it all with him. So that's what I hoping will do.
The Jacobson?
Uh, Timothy Jacobson, yeah. So, yeah, so I think that it's just we need to to have some more materials for you to look at before we can accept that for you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kathy. I was just curious why we.
Yeah, no, of course.
Um, okay, on to item agenda number seven, administrative review. So we've had a request from Love Levin Killenworth Turnpike. Um, Ken Navarro, the managing partner for Indian River Shops, um, to release a partial release of their bond. I guess Kathy or Abby, you wanna give us an update on this request and I heard that our engineer made a recommendation as well?
Our engineer did make a recommendation. I know Kathy's been, you know, been out. She she and John Trickle took me out as well to take a look at at kind of the status of the site. Um, long story short, the the recommendation of the town engineer is is not to release the bond at this time. It's the same recommendation that DTC offered in twenty twenty when they explained to the applicants um, and and their team that the the bond that was was set for the project was for both the installation and the ongoing maintenance until the site was fully stabilized. And what you'll see in the in the memo that I provided, um, I try, we provided you with the phasing plan that was associated with the bonding that the commission originally set. There were three distinct fa- so the the original bond was set at ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. That was then subsequently broken up into phases because of the the staging of where the development was going to go first. Over time, various other phases of the work has been opened. However, no additional money has been posted. So of the ninety-nine, seven hundred and twelve that was originally required, only sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two was ever posted for phase one. However, work around the hotel, around um, the the padded site that you can see north of the furniture barn, there's other areas that have opened up. So while, you know, there is, there's the, I think there's an assessment in in here from the applicant's um, environmental scientist essentially saying, look, that, you know, there are piecemeal pieces along the the stretch of the silt fence and and the erosion sediment controls that you could consider, you know, deeming to be complete. The town engineer did not recommend going in that direction because of the complexity of that and the difficulty in sort of saying, well, this stretch came out, we put our final seating down and there's no silt fence for these twenty feet, but the next twenty feet still needs it. Um, and so that so that's really the purpose of the recommendation here. So so really, the memo is to give you some history. Um, I think the, you know, for the commission's, you know, charge right now, it's to make a determination if any portion of the bond would be considered for release. If so, how much? And if not, um, you know, why and when would you consider it? You know, what what would you need to see in terms of um, allowing release to to occur?
So, I mean, I don't wanna speak for the commission. I think, you know, we would be open to releasing a portion of the bond dependent upon, you know, percentage of final stabilization reached. Um, but like you said, you know, there the bonding amount that we set was based on a phasing plan and they're not really absolutely sticking to the phasing plan. You know, so, because I, you know, they they've opened up and they're they've graded um, you know, back where the the hotel is likely to still go, which is, I think, showing part of phase two. Um, so, you know, I I don't know. I'd leave it up to the, you know, the rest of the commission to, you know, hear their ideas, you know, and certainly understanding that, you know, we're holding a pretty large bond amount to them, but this is also money that, you know, we're holding in case that they decide to ever walk away or, you know, just don't feel like complying with, you know, meeting final stabilization and it would allow the town to go in and, you know, complete that work for them.
I heard, I I, Mr. Chairman, I heard through the grapevine that they're doing it. So when they we when they complete one part, then they'll go to the next part in the next part, like on the furniture part. So there's gonna be um, a lot of instruction. There's still gonna be a lot of construction going on, you know? Um, I think that um, Kathy should definitely uh, make sure that the uh, soil erosion controls are in place because that's where, you know, water and um, and that's the aquifer down there too. So, you know, we have to maintain, you know, maintain. So if we, how how much it, how much money do we have?
Sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Maybe I go eight eighteen thousand dollars at the most and keep to fifty, you know, um, so we'll show a little good faith, but I wouldn't release more than that because, like Scott said, they could walk away, but I they're not gonna walk away, but.
I would just say.
Abby, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying for me, as the wetlands officer to go out there, I would really would want to not be an arbitrary figure because I I'd like to have some more substantial reasons as to why you're releasing a certain amount, but not another amount.
Because there's so much going on, Kathy.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that it it was hard when when Rich Snarsky, when I was a certified soil scientist and I walked the perimeter of the site with him, he can't really quantify, well, if if, like as Abby was saying, he said, he put up flags and we were out there. He said, this part of the silt fence cannot be removed. This part can. So how do you put like a dollar figure on, you can have this piece, but not this piece? That's the thing that's gonna be kind of hard to, because because DTC set the bond and then DTC recommended not to um, release it. If if you choose to, I just would wanna be able to tell DTC and the applicant why you chose a certain figure, so I know kind of the the quantity of what it, do you understand what I mean for what it's worth?
I know exactly. But I would I would also say that you you have to have two growing seasons, you know, and it hasn't been two growing seasons.
Well, and and just to to just note too, that that what Kathy was talking with Rich Snarsky going out with her, that was for places where silt fence could be removed, not where it was removed, finally stabilized, seated or whatever the final plan was that would that you originally approved with those growing seasons in place. So final sta- final stabilization could be noted and and, you know, tracked. So so it's not finally stabilized. It's, you know, the question is, you know, could erosion sediment control elements be removed, but final stabilization has not occurred?
If the if it hasn't occurred, then I wouldn't really say anything yet. That the, you know, I mean, Kath, you've seen, I haven't been down there, you know, I just seen the, you know, I just.
There it's a it's an extremely sensitive area, as Rich Snarsky had said. One of the that the wetlands particularly is a very high value wetland and there is the aquifer there. Um, and parts of this the stabilization have not taken place. It's it's just too new. Um, and and while some pieces have filled in, I I mean, it they've been wonderful to work with and everything. It's nothing like that. But it's just, a- again, it's just hard to quantify, you know, where everything gets removed and set and then how much is that worth in terms of putting a dollar value on it?
So why are they even asking for the money back? What are they, what do they think?
They they asked for the release. They they requested it. And so I told them that I'd like to go out to the site with Rich Snarsky again, because he's a certified soil scientist. He's the one who did all the work out there. And also, um, I I wanted a professional opinion. And so he and I have walked that site multiple times. And then what I did was I got his report, sent it to John Trickle from DTC Engineering, our town engineering firm. And then he looked at the report and then he made his recommendation not to release the bond. And then the 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 property owner, the applicant, said, we don't think this is right. We would like the bond released. So instead of going back and forth between the engineer and the applicant, um, we came to you for you to make the decision, even though DTC set the bond, you're the commission, so.
This this to me feels very early to release the the leverage that we have that they do the right thing.
Yes.
We're we're a commission that's that's completely reasonable. We eventually do wanna make sure that this goes back, but this is this is here for a very legitimate reason. I think if they came to us and said, hey, we've done eighty percent of this, so could we get twenty percent of this back? Or or sort of came to us with with something that's a little bit more of a proposal, maybe it's something we'd entertain. But I don't know. I I think that that overall, when I look at this, like, let's wait until this is all done and then we'll, you know, there's there's nothing I've seen based on everything you've told us, Kathy, and myself going out to the site on a regular basis, looking around like that that says like, oh, we're good here. Let's let's give, let's release this. Um, that's my personal opinion about it.
I agree with you, Ryan. Yep, I agree too. Kathy, it's really, it's really you and Abby. Um, you guys been out there. John John's John's one of the most fairest guys I ever met. I mean, he's so fair. And um, and he's always looking out for the best interests of us and the town. So I'd go along with his his recommendation that not to release anything, but there there is so much stuff out there that there's a lot of construction in it and it hasn't been two growing seasons, you know, so nothing's permanently stabilized, so get one bad storm, we're a hell of a mess out there, so.
Okay, so I I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we're gonna heed our town engineers' advice and not release the bond at this time.
Yeah, they're professionals.
I guess procedurally, Sherry, does this need to be done by motion and vote?
It should. It should be done by motion.
Okay, so I'll I'll take a motion to deny the request for a partial release of the bond.
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to deny the uh, the request for partial release of the bond.
Right, a second?
Do you wanna put a reason in your motion?
No.
No?
It'll be in the transcript, I think, you know, if they wanna if they wanna review it.
Brian and Ed and on the fact, you know, maybe they should just submit a proposal on what they believe, you know, they're that they should have, but you know, I mean, they can't just ask you, hey, you know, we have sixty-eight thousand dollars out there and you, you know, how much can it give me back? You know, it's so just, you know.
We if we if we ever did give back anything, we it won't be very much. So I say.
Well, you guys have dealt with them continuously, so that's, you know, you know them pretty well.
Kathy Kathy, actually, you know.
Before you get into discussion, you need a second to the motion.
Uh, Eddie Eddie seconded.
Eddie?
Yep. Kathy's been dealing with um, Lawrence, even about.
And there's no reason on the denial, motion?
Yes, just a motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Okay.
Based on based on the um, the facts from our uh, town engineer.
You could say our engineer, DTC's recommendation.
Yeah.
On recommendation from town engineer.
Abby.
And that was the second.
The the bond money, I see. What is the 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 ten percent interest over the three years? How is that? Does that get paid out by us to them or is that just, where where does that ten percent come from?
Um, I'm looking for the ten percent in here, sorry.
Yeah, you've got the sixty-eight, two thirty-two, but it's broken down fourteen, two eighty-five of that is ten percent over uh, three years. Is that something that we're paying to them? Is that something? Is that something? Where's that?
I'm sorry, the I'm I'm confused with it. I'm a little bit confused. The, let's see.
At the page that has the, oh, has a couple of pages. On page, at the bottom of page one of three on the Indian River Bond Release Request package, they've got um, it itemized there and one of the line items is ten percent interest over three years, fourteen, two eighty-five.
So I don't, I'll actually, I'll have to ask our finance folks about that because this was, I'm not sure what that ten percent is for. I'm not aware of of holding any additional money or or earning on bond holdings on the part of the town. So I'll have to find out when the bond was set, why that was. These estimates were provided originally by DTC. And so whether or not that is a number that is actually in place and is earning or is is something that was just an estimate through DTC when they were creating the original amount, I will find that out for you.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I mean, if we're paying that ten percent, maybe I'm changing my tone here. It's a great return. That's a fantastic return.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, can I get money for that kind of return?
Yeah.
I'll talk to our finance director because I'm not aware of any any particular return, but we'll find out for you.
Yeah, I'll be down there to give you a bond, but every turn three years.
Yeah, I, you know, I think if if, you know, you end up talking to the developer, you know, I I think we're, we would entertain a reduction of a partial release. Maybe based on percent of the project that's reached final stabilization and won't be retouched. But, you know, just the fact that they're kind of going out of order, you know, with their phasing plan, you know, it technically, it looks like they started phase two by, you know, excavating and, you know, moving earth around in the area with the hotel. And I don't think we've collected on phase two's bond, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so there's there's another phase two bonding is fifteen thousand, three sixty-seven. And then phase three is another sixteen thousand, one or thirteen. So, you know, I don't know how we would feel, you know, giving back money on phase one when they've already started phase two and we haven't collected bond yet.
Yeah.
So, okay, any any other?
Today only perhaps twenty-five percent remains incomplete of the hundred percent insulation is complete and approximately fifty percent of the maintenance. And we should believe that the bond should be adjusted accordingly. That's what they're, that's what they're going by.
Honestly, in my head, I go back and forth between like, do we start walking down this path? Honestly, in my head, I go back and forth between like, do we start walking down this path of like, giving partial bonds back as?
We have done that in the past, Ryan.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and I mean, they've been fantastic and obviously we love everybody, I'm sure. I certainly love the development in town and it's been great and we want to keep being. A, you know, a great host to them, but. And like I said, it creates sort of a lot of work whenever you just follow up the plan, like you'll end up getting this money back.
Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All those voting in favor of denying the release of the bond for eleven.
Hi.
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 Anyone oppose or abstain? A motion is approved for.
Well, April, we're forty two days away from spring, so. Maybe, you know, maybe we visit it and, uh, may, maybe something will change, I don't know.
Nothing's stopping them from asking again.
Right.
Especially if they would pay their phase two bonding. And I think maybe we'd be open to partially releasing phase one. But again, you know.
Partial, yep.
You know, that, I'd like to hear, you know, DTC's opinion on that as well. So they've made a good point. Okay, on to Agenda seven B, Planning and Zoning Commission referral to the Inland Wetlands Commission. This is for one sixty one West Main Street, they're applying for a two lot re subdivision and open space parcel. Yes, Kath, Kathie or Abby?
Yep, so this, this is, the Planning and Zoning Commission is looking at some procedural elements in the statutes that govern subdivision regulation. One of the provisions of which is that when land involved in a subdivision or re-subdivision involves. Land that is regulated by the Inland Wetlands Commission, this body makes, has the opportunity to make comment on it prior to the application being acted on. In this particular case of one sixty one, the original application came into the Planning and Zoning Commission only showing. A title wetlands line on the plans. There were some questions asked by staff about how that line was created and found in the first place. And it led to the applicant actually submitting new information partially through the application review at PCC. Said, you know, to let folks know that there were actually inland wetlands involved on the site that had not yet been flagged in the field. So that field flagging has subsequently happened and then the applicant agreed at the Planning and Zoning Commission's to do that. And then because at this time, there are no particular regulated activities proposed. And the applicant is not proposing an amendment to the official wetlands map of the town. The applicant determined that there was not a intent on their part to apply for anything with this group. Because again, there's nothing in particular to act on, but the Planning and Zoning Commission, again, procedurally wanted to make sure that inland wetlands had the opportunity to comment. Because of this new resource area being defined. So the question before you now is, do you have any questions, concerns or comments that you would like to, you know, give to the Planning and Zoning Commission? You can simply acknowledge receipt and say thank you, applicant will see you if and when you propose a regulated activity in this area. Or if there's any questions or conditions that you would like Planning and zoning to consider, you can forward them under comment as well.
Is it, has everything been delineated?
Mm-hmm, it has, yes, Rich Snarsky went out and it was, and through the applicant, they've picked it up, they've put it on a survey. You should have a copy of that, of that revised plan in this package that came to you. So you can see the inland wetland line that was added, the flagging, the buffer area. Which was not originally shown on the plans submitted to PNC.
Has it, Abby, has it made it smaller for them to work or?
It actually, it expanded inland farther from what they originally showed. Most, but most of the resource area is contained within the open space parcel. But the portion of fifty foot buffer comes closer in to the lot two area and a portion of that piece. And so there is, it just sort of squeezes a little bit, you know, developable area, not incredibly substantially, but it is closer. And so you know, now you have an accurate line.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, comments on this re-subdivision? Subdividing one lot, looks like they're just subdividing it into two building lots and an open space, right?
Right, one of the lots is already developed for business use. So there's a provision here to create a second lot for potential commercial development and then open space being proposed to be granted to the Red Wing Foundation. For the remainder of the coastal entitlement and inland resources.
Any, any questions from the commission? Comments on the plan? So, you know, typically we don't provide comments without an application. So I think if we just respond back to PNC that, you know, thank you for, you know, we received it and we just have no, we reserve comment until. And, you know, an application showing proposed work is submitted in front of our commission. All right, moving to number C, staff reports. Just Kathy, your wetlands officer's report for this month.
Okay, so project updates, the Carter Hill Road Bridge is complete and I don't know if any of you have driven over it yet, but it's open. I had written a report to you about a concern I had when I was out there about, I actually was out there with Abby and also with. The town engineering firm, John Trickle. And there is a portion of the asphalt where it's a low point and, you know, around this, with all the streets coming down. And it goes right into the waterway and there seemed to be nothing to filter it. And so I spoke to him and Todd Hayjack, who's our Director of Public Works, and they were concerned that if we put anything, it could cause. I guess it's very prone to flooding anyway, so there is some rip rap, they put some rocks in, but unfortunately, that's probably all we can do. But at least we have a little bit of filtration down there. So the other things that were on my list here are fifteen Baxter Road and as you know, now there's a new application for that, so there's really nothing to say there. And Blaine Avenue, I had sent you some reports a while back. It started out as a warning of violation, then it went to a notice of violation. I had gone out to the property because I had a complaint about. Somebody doing work in the inland wetlands and in the water course without a permit. And I did see heavy equipment and also the owner was. Apparently, you know, doing things to harm the beavers, wanted to get rid of them. He also put in a gate in front of the culvert and a fence. And there was a chain, he was taking down some trees. So I had asked him to stop and I gave him, told him verbally, you know, cease and desist any activity. Down there and then I went down the next day because I got another complaint and there was still some work being done. So what I did was I contacted. Darcy Winter at the Connecticut Deep. Because what I wanted was to find out if any damage has been done and how to get that. So information, so what I did was I contacted the property owner. He brought in Rich Snarsky who's flagged the inland wetlands and now they're working with an engineer to put a survey together. But also I asked if there were any adverse impacts to, that there, if there's remediation required. And also to find out what normal is, what, where should that water level be? Because the neighbor said there used to be ducks and egrets and things and the person who's violating said that that's not true. And the complainant said that he had drained the pond, we'll come to find out it is not at the right level. So I've asked him to submit this information with a remediation plan. From the certified soil scientists and the engineer to determine what needs to be done to fix it. So they're in the process of putting all that together now, wetlands have been delineated, I talked to the engineer today. He's gonna put that survey together, work with the property owner on some kind of remediation plan and hopefully I'll have an application for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and other than that. Anything else? Um, I had sent you in my report just some information from the Kaki Rick meeting I attended. And there's a meeting coming up in March I'm gonna go to for the Certified Association of Wetland Scientists. It's their annual meeting and the theme this year is wetlands and education, so I'm looking forward to that. And other than that, just been doing some terrific work with Abby, she's wonderful. And we're working a lot on streamlining procedures in the office and she has an incredible technical background. So she's helping me to learn a lot of things I didn't even know were possible with the computer system and our GIS system. So I know that's later on the agenda to talk about a checklist, but I think we're doing some great work in the office. To make things run more efficiently, even with reporting. Because I was talking with her today about how I do the staff report, plus I do the property reports. And then I submit a report to the town council, so we're, you know, trying to find ways so I don't have to keep kind of doing redundant work and to kind of work smarter. And more efficiently.
Abby, thank you for sending me that, the link for the Yukon, I did that Zoom.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was pretty good, we got two more now.
So that's it for my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Agenda item seven D, proposed amendments to our bylaws. So we had accepted the amendments to our bylaws on December sixth and sent them to town council for adoption. I guess, is there an update on that? I did not.
I don't, I don't believe they've been presented to town council yet. I'll check again with the town manager about status, I know, I know that they've been received. So I think it's a matter of when that kind of balances out on their agenda roster, so I will find out where that stands for you.
Okay, perfect. Seven E, so just a bit of discussion tonight on process for accepting new applications. E, that you guys have developed a new checklist.
Yep, so this is just, you know, again, we've been promising that we would kind of put together something that shows you what we're doing in the office to review applications as they come in. And the things that we look for to determine basic completeness and whether something has come in for review. And I think the, the question, I think Scott, that you asked earlier about Linderah or the, I, I DBC twenty three, twenty one. Is important because as folks apply for, you know, putting their applications in. There's sort of an intake process that needs to happen before it is deemed just be an actual application. Our computer system, our online permitting system assigns it a number automatically, whether it's been officially received by the commission or not. So you may see applications in some cases come in a little bit out of order. Because someone may have applied and put information into the system that doesn't qualify for the minimum application requirements. So what we've done is created this checklist that we can also share with the applicants, that people can understand exactly what they're going to be required to have if they have conversation or question. They can certainly go through that with us, but it gives you a sense of, you know, when something comes through that system. Here, you know, the top portion is, here's what Sherry is checking as sort of the clerk review to say, just a fundamental, basic building blocks of an application. Did they, did they meet the required parameters to apply in terms of the list that's in the commission's regulations? So that's the first step. And then it starts to get into content and so that's when things move over to Kathy and there's an identification of, you know, is there any referral to another agency, another group? Anybody else with jurisdiction over the work that's going on here that may need to comment and give you feedback? You know, does this require engineering review, you know, that kind of stuff? And then the third part of it really has to do with the technical reviews being done in-house. And so that's, you know, whether those are things strictly done in-house, whether there are things done by the town engineer. If we, you know, if the commission is looking for third party review for complicated applications for, you know, stormwater or wetlands assessments or any of those types of things. That's kind of where those would be determined. And so there's, it just, it's sort of a checks and balances to make sure that you're confident and clear in what we're doing in the office. And that if there are pieces that an applicant, you know, is missing information or whatever else, we can actually use the checklist as a guide to report back to you at the time of receipt saying, look. It's substantively complete, but we have questions in these categories that the application really needs to, you know, the applicant needs to provide before they present to you and take your time to do that. And so we want to make sure that when folks are presenting to you, we, you know, certainly within the statutory timeframes and all that kind of stuff, but when they're presenting. You know, a majority of the questions have at least been answered or have been, from the staff level, it is, we've done this sort of initial piece. And so hopefully we can bring you things that are in a place to either act on, you know, in quick fashion. Or, you know, the applicant has been advised and can answer and anticipate questions you may have so that it's an efficient use of your time.
Now, this is perfect, so if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, it was Sherry. Put it in her email to us, it was around like four fifteen today. So I took a look through it and I think that you got everything. So this is, you know, exactly what I was looking for, something that we can easily see for each application, what is included and what isn't. Just help us make our decisions a little bit easier. Anyone have any comments, discussions on the new checklist for receiving applications? Now, great, thank you Abby and Kathy for putting that together, I think that's gonna really just kind of help streamline the process this year. Great, all right, moving along, seven F, additions to the next regular meeting. Does anyone propose any additions to our agenda for next month's meeting? Take that, Simon says a no. Correspondence, any new correspondence from this month?
Oh, let me get my. Have to look at which pile of papers it's in. Okay, guys, Kathy mentioned for the Connecticut Association of Wetland Scientists, their annual meeting is on March ninth. And it's an in-person meeting this year. I sent you the information, it's actually part of the. Monthly report that they send to their activities. It's number one on that and I sent it out to you. On January third, I believe. So if anybody's interested in going, I need to know as soon as possible. So far, I don't think anybody's signed up. And nobody's gotten back to me. And there was also the. Land use seminar that the Connecticut Bar Association put on and that's also in March. Nobody from Wetlands has gotten back to us on that. But in order to get the materials, it's going to be a remote session, but they do have a big thick book that they go follow. And in order to get that, we have to have. Your registration information submitted to them prior to February fifteenth. So, you know, I don't know if anybody's interested, it's a Saturday program.
It's all day.
That one.
I have taken that one before.
Yeah, it's nine to four thirty, so it's a full day.
Yep, so I've taken that one personally before and I found that one educational. In case anyone is interested in it.
They, what they do is they have different sections. But they also, in the inland, inland wetlands section, they go over current law. Active cases, any changes in the law that affects this, affects wetlands. And then there's other general sessions. Like bias is one of them. It's a, and what else? Affordable housing, I'm trying to think of what else they have. There's zoning board of appeals, there's planning and zoning. But then there's general, general blocks of information that applies to all three commissions.
Okay, thank you, Sherry, so if anyone's interested in those educational opportunities, just reach out to Sherry and help you.
Yeah, and if you, for the bar association, please call tomorrow or Thursday at the latest. Actually, tomorrow would be better.
Okay. Item agenda nine, payment of bills, I did not see any bills for this month that we need to address.
Did you get mine?
No, no bills.
Did you get mine?
Okay, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn and everybody have a fine evening.
Thanks, second.
Sir, I'll second it.
Second it, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, all right, thanks everybody and good luck, Ryan.
Thank you, bye-bye. Guys.
Sherry, do you want my notes? You need my notes?
Um. Um, I'll let you know tomorrow if I need them.
Okay.
Thank you, Eddie.
If the dog didn't need them, we'll have them.